Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call this Orangeburg County Council Meeting of February the 4th, 2019, to order. We're gonna ask Councilman Johnny Robinell to give us a moral thanks before we move forward.
That is my hat and a word for him. Father God, we thank you for allowing us to come out this afternoon to discuss some businesses concerned with this county. Father, we ask that you be in the midst. Father, we pray that the decision that we made be in the best interest of the people that you serve. Father God, not only for this government, but we pray for government all around the world. Father God, be with them as well too. Christ in them, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so very much. I hope each and every one of you had the opportunity to look at the minutes of the January 2nd meeting, and if we have our within ten a motion and a second that those minutes be received as written.
Come on with you.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rembling, and second by Ms. Cooper Smith. That minutes be received as written. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
At our last meeting, I made a correction of the minutes. It appears as if people who were very concerned, intimately involved and concerned by the issues of this day, did not understand what that motion was. And I'd like to emphasize what I said during that time, because we all are honest people with good intentions. And I don't want to give anybody any ill will in terms of our intentions. Now, I'll beg your pardon. Please allow me to make both remarks.
Yes, sir. It wasn't including the minutes?
I didn't see.
Okay.
Now, you must be aware by now that people at home, just at this council meeting, before it was just only the persons who attend this meeting, but we have people who are very concerned about what happened in our council meeting. And I've had several calls since about what happened in our meeting. I'm not throwing off on anybody on council. I just want to make sure we clarify what took place. Now, we have audiences. We go by rules and regulations in our meeting. And following that, I think the last meeting we had, when I was a little late, I was definitely late for this council meeting. Our statements were made that was not completely accurate. It was not done intentionally, I don't think. I think it was done unintentionally. But according to our articles here in Orangeburg County, in regards to chairman and the vice chairman, I'm not trying to change anything, but I think they should know that we know what was done and what was said, and how it should be. So I'm gonna read Section 2-31, Chairman and Vice Chairman. There should be a chairman and a vice chairman elected by the council from among its members. A term of office for the chairman and vice chairmen shall be for two years, or until the successor are elected and qualified. Vacancies shall be filled from the unexpired term of office vacated. Such elections shall be by a majority vote of the whole council, and shall be held at the first meeting of the council following the general election. Election of the newly-elected members having been sworn in into office. Now, it also, as Dean said, I'll lay down on Section 2-58, it gives some rules of order. And I'm gonna suggest that we have a workshop in terms of the rules of order, so we all can understand what they are. Now, on the Section 2.59, same voting, the chairman shall vote in all cases, exception when he may be personally involved in, actually what it says, a personal financial issue. The chairman's name shall be called last, and if with his vote, the council remains equally divided, then the question shall be decided in the negative. That certainly means if there is a financial obligation on the part of the chairman, and after he votes, it's still a tie, the chairman will lose and will not win. We have not had that issue. So it was said originally that the chairman shall not vote if it's a tie. That completely is not so, and we know that. And I've had about several calls go tell me what it is, and I said, "Well, I know better. I've had it. I was just late for the meeting." And I want a parliamentary vicinity workshop, so that we all will be aware of how this is done, when the next time we do it. Thank you very much for your consideration, and for allowing me to provide that information to our constituents and those other members who may be in our county.
Thank you so much, Ms. Owens. We appreciate that. At the beginning of our meetings, to all of you who are familiar with the meetings we have here, we always have two areas of public comments. We have public comments of agenda items, and we have public comments of other matters. That means that if you have an agenda item that you want to comment on, when I open the floor for agenda items, you will approach, report them, and comment on that agenda item, unless that item has a public hearing. And if it has a public hearing, you will wait until we get to that item to come forth. The second part of the public comments is other matters. That means, at that time, you may approach, report them, when I say "other matters," and bring any comment to council that you may wish. And when it said "public comments," it means that you comment to council. We don't get into back-and-forth issues with it. If there's a question of concern, we will pass it on and try to get it answered later. But now, the floor is now open for agenda item comments. Agenda items. Anything on agenda items?
Yes, that's yours.
Okay. Hearing none, we will close that portion and open for public comments of other matters. Anything else that you may approach. Please state your name and the subject that you would approach.
My name is Janice Frederick Watts. I am homeowner in the Frederick Street area, 1230 Olive Avenue. I was present for the Orangeburg County Council's last meeting on January 22nd. In regard to the food service that is scheduled to be placed in the Frederick Street area, I asked questions regarding rezoning, including the vision for the future of the community over the next 10 or so years, and how the rezoning would affect the community. I also asked about the benefits of rezoning for this community, as well as the drawbacks. Not all of my questions were answered. I was also referred to the Comprehensive Plan, and I have begun reading it. I have not read it in its entirety. Before looking at the plan, I could already speak to the need in the Gulf Avenue area for revitalization in regards to housing. In the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 7, Land Use and Development, specifically urban residential land uses, there is a reference to commercial uses encroaching into residential areas because of the BIMON zoning category. That paragraph ends with a reference about a better balance to improve the design of non-residential uses to allow neighborhood preservation. Neighborhood preservation needs to be honored and is essential. And I wonder how you will ensure the preservation of that community, that neighborhood. I read a statement about community planning, which is very meaningful to me. I now see some aspects of that in the Comprehensive Plan. The quote is, "Planning allows for the orderly growth and development of communities. Planners faithfully protect the common interest. Our public interest, planners shall seek social justice by working to expand choice and opportunity for all. Planners are guardians of our common future, and plan for the needs of present and future generations. Planning was intended to focus on place and people." And that's the end of the quote. My hope is that with the decision that is made about the rezoning, that it will indeed enhance the growth and development of our community, and expand choice and opportunity for all, as well as be mindful of the future needs of present and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Frederick. Any other? Hearing none, we will close that portion of the agenda, and going to our regular agenda. First thing is a presentation from Clemson Extension.
Thank you all for having us this evening. In the past, I've been here at the Budget Appropriation Time, and spoke to y'all about what we offer here in the county to the citizens. And I've always told y'all, we were working on getting a 4-H agent in the county. We finally had one. She's been on staff for a little while. I'm gonna introduce her here in just a minute. And for those of you that may have worked with Beth Richardson in the past, our forestry agent, she did not retire, but we have, she's been replaced as well. And I'd just like to introduce them, and get these ladies to come forward and tell you how they're gonna serve the citizens of Orangeburg County. And first, we'll have Glenna Mason. She's our 4-H agent. And then Janet Steele will be our, she's our forestry agent.
Hi, again, I'm Glenna Mason. I've been employed with Clemson Extension since June the 18th. I appreciate the support from Orangeburg County Council, and helping to fund some things that involve 4-H. Since I've been there for about seven months, 4-H is at my heart, because I grew up in 4-H in Mississippi. So I love being able to give back to the youth in Orangeburg County. I'm a former teacher out at the Covey Area Career Center, so I know a lot about 4-H, or I know a lot about the county as well, and the needs of the students, and the needs of the youth in the county. Since I've been here, we have added a 4-H club down in the Holly Hill area, and we have included six clubs right now in the whole county, six traditional 4-H clubs. And we've reached, have reached about 150 youth so far through those clubs. But I just finished doing a Healthy Lifestyles program out at HKT, so I'll be doing some more of the Healthy Lifestyles program as well. I wanna say too, I'm very excited about two groups, that I have helped to secure a gardening program. At the Stone Elementary School, they already have one, but they're going through our South Carolina gardening program, and we're gonna do a 4-H gardening program out there. And I was just visiting with them last week about getting their garden started. And also, at an Ellery Elementary, they wrote a grant as well, and we'll be starting some 4-H projects out there, in hopes of even getting that greenhouse that's at that school. I understand it's been closed for a while, so they're very excited with this gardening program, and so they can maybe get that greenhouse going as well. I'm looking forward to serving the youth. If you have, I'm always looking for volunteers to lead clubs, so if some of you are available for volunteers, or could help me point to volunteers in the community, I would appreciate that. And again, I thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Steele. I started December 10th, and as Jonathan said, I'm replacing Beth Richardson, who was here about 30 years as the Forestry and Wildlife Agent. I'm gonna be covering Calhoun, Lexington, Orangeburg, Collin, and Hampton, but my home office is right here in Orangeburg. This has always been one of the busiest counties for the Forestry and Wildlife team in this part of the state. I have a background in forestry and wildlife from Virginia Tech. My master's from Clemson, and actually started my forestry career here in Orangeburg with Forestry Commission in 1989. So I got here just in time for Hurricane Hugo to hit, and help with reforestation efforts after that. I'll be serving the county as the contact for any forestry and wildlife-related needs, some meeting with landowners, site visits, helping them diagnose any insect and disease problems, making site visits for everywhere, from the homeowner to the large forest landowner. I'm also, will be the liaison between the counties and the forestry staff. Clemson Extension up at the university, so they're focusing a lot of efforts now in treatments for invasive species, looking at ways to improve the markets for our forest timberland owners here in the state. We have a lot of wood on the, growing now, and we're growing more wood than we ever have. So we're gonna be working, trying to find better markets and improve markets for forest landowners, working on a lot of issues they're facing, such as transportation with logging. Loggers in the state are aging. They're facing different issues with high insurance rates, so we wanna make sure all the landowners have an opportunity to get all their wood to market and get it there at a good price. Also, gonna be working with a lot of our forest landowners, talking about transition planning for their forest lands. We've got an aging landowner base here in the state. Most of our landowners are at least 55 and older, so we need to start finding ways that we can get our younger people interested in forestry, get them interested in maintaining their family forest, and keeping those lands in working forest. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and all of the support you've provided for Clemson Extension here in Orangeburg County, and look forward to working with the people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janice. We appreciate that.
Now, one other face, new face we do have at the office now, Susan Till is our new administrative assistant. Susan's been on staff now about six months, so if you call or come by the office, you will see a new person there. And she's doing a real good job for us, and loves working there, so I think she'll be with us quite a while. We thank y'all for y'all's time and y'all's support, and if you have any questions of us before we sit down, we'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Will you assist landowners in getting their timber approved before cutting?
We can meet with them and discuss with them if it is time for them to get their timber cut, and discuss with them the best methods, make sure they're following all the best management practices for timber harvesting. We don't actually provide proofs, information for landowners, but we do have a good list for each of the counties of consulting foresters, and also the South Carolina Forestry Commission maintains a list. So just make sure that we're putting those landowners in contact with reputable folks who'll come out and help them actually implement setting up a timber sale and getting the timber harvested.
Any other questions from any other council members? Thank you so very much.
Thank y'all for having us.
Thank y'all for coming out. Litter, committee overview?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Friday, January 25th, an array of state and local leaders, the campaign committee members, and concerned citizens met in county council chambers to discuss ways to combat litter in Orangeburg County. Many of the ways discussed in the meeting were mentioned in the local newspaper. On Wednesday, January 9th, and Thursday, January 10th of this year, a county litter survey was done. Each of the seven council districts received a score. According to the survey, county council districts 1 and 2 are the most littered. County council districts 6 and 7 are the least littered. It is believed that districts 1 and 2 are the most littered, because they have more dirt roads. Serial litterers have a tendency to litter dirt roads more than paved roads. These roads are more widespread, less traveled, and far from convenience sites. Our county wire cleanup begins Saturday, April 13th, and ends Saturday, April 27th. In the January 25th meeting, we mentioned getting businesses and churches involved in the county wire cleanup. I drafted a letter which was approved by those of the litter campaign committee who read it, inviting businesses to participate, as we put forth effort to sustain our county's aesthetics and ensure it remains a warm and welcoming place to live, work, play, and worship. We are asking businesses and churches to participate by using their digital marquees to promote a litter-free message. Examples demonstrating support may read, "Love where you live slash work. Keep Orangeburg County beautiful. Don't build Littleburg. Please don't litter," or others. A concerned citizen who frequents the One Orangeburg County Initiative meeting suggested that litter in Orangeburg County should be a topic of concern. I appreciate the opportunity for giving this overview. As you are aware, there is a problem in our county. We need to band together and come up with a workable, with workable solutions. And some of this analysis right here in Orangeburg County, drivers slow down and drive within the speed limit, because these towns have a name for writing tickets to those who speed. Nobody wants to be fined or points deducted from his or her driver's license. We must instill the concept in the minds of serial litterers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith, for that overview. Next item on the agenda is resolution and audits. First item is a resolution to authorize and approve the waiver of a repurchase right with respect to certain property owned by the Archard Clemson Orangeburg LLC, and North Carolina Limited Liability Company, BLT 0707, LLC. It says, "Limited liability company and KCC Orangeburg LLC, a South Carolina Limited Liability Company, to authorize and approve the excavation, execution, excuse me, and delivery of a waiver of purchase, repurchase's right to document such waivers and to provide for other matters related thereto." Mr. Administrator, you are the attorney of this resolution. Kind of give a summary of what's it all about for the public, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As a part of our traditional matrix for economic development, whenever we sell property to different companies, a part of the package, we have first right of refusal in the event that property comes back and is resold. This particular property is being resold, and we've been asked, would we like to execute our right of first refusal, or in this case, we do not, and our yield for the attorney has there been additional information?
There is no additional information.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Yes, sir. We did not get a map indicating what parcel of property this was. I'll probably Greg can tell me.
Greg, just walk in again, put you on the spot. This is a resolution to authorize a waiver of repurchase right with this certain property from the North Carolina Limited Liability, you for mayor with, he said he didn't get a map, where is that located, that's what he wanted to find.
That is in reference to a property for Mr. Young. If I'm not mistaken here, isn't that part of PIBO? Or are we talking about a different project? I'm sorry.
Prosperity Drive.
Oh, oh, excuse me. Prosperity Drive.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
15 acres, which piece of property is? We didn't get a map.
Excuse me, let me back up. This is in reference to Project Glass. This is a project that is the southern warehouse, part of the original covenants and restrictions of the original park, required for council to approve the sale of that building. So we are approving someone to buy that building, an economic development project. I hope I answered the question, maybe?
I think that is the building where the folk had the cross.
Yes, it's right across from Trinity, and it's right across from Walker Emotions. We actually, at one time, had manufactured the Humvee MRAP Buffalo vehicles. It has been used by Husvarna, it's been used by Plastics, and paper for warehousing. And part of the covenants and restrictions allow for the county to buy that building if we so desire before it is sold again. So it's just a right of.
Or they got, they gonna say that somebody put it in your address?
And that's part of what we will have in executive session.
Okay. We didn't get a map to identify what piece of property was.
I apologize. I should have done that, Mr. Young.
Any other questions for anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second for passes of this resolution?
Move with you. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Whimley, and second by Mr. Owens for passes of the resolution. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and motions care. Item 2 on the resolution, there's a resolution adopting Orangeburg County information technology policies, procedures, and standards, and revising the employee handbook to include violation of same as a basis for disciplinary action. I guess that's pretty straightforward. Mr. Young, attorney, y'all add anything to that?
Mr. Chairman, I yield to that, sir. It is self-explanatory. IT is an integral component of administering a county. It's very valuable, and there need to be guidelines, policies, and procedures to safeguard that very valuable asset. The county paid a consultant as part of an earlier contract to suggest those policies, procedures, and standards, and they have been vetted all the way up to a recommendation to council, which is where we are now.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Council, any questions for the attorney? Hearing none, can I get a motion and a second for passing of this resolution, please?
Mr. Holmes, Chair.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Robinell, and second by Mr. Loris, that we passed this resolution as explained. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and motions care. Item number three is an audit, the third reading, and this is an audit amending the Orangeburg County flood damage prevention. Audit to add a section regarding reasonably safe from flooding. And this is the third reading of this audit, and for maybe those who may not have been at the previous two readings, Mr. Young?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In the event of climate change, the different things that we've seen with flooding, and the different flooding trends that we've seen, it's a part of a recommendation through our flood ordinance that we have looked at from time to time by the Department of Natural Resources to revamp some of our ordinances. And it was, it was advised to us that we needed to add reasonably safe from flooding to our article, because of the ability to review permits and applications, you cannot no longer say this area did not flood or not. So they asked us to put in the phrase reasonably safe from flooding to help get a better understanding of all the reviews and permit and applications that are used to determine whether building sites will be safe from flooding.
Thank you, sir. Questions, council? Hearing none, can I get a motion and a second, the third reading on this one?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, led by Ms. Hillary Sten for third reading. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item 4 is an audit, this is the second reading on this audit, and is to change the zoning designation of the following parcels, tax map number 0173-07-13-015, and parcel 0173-07-13-008, and 0173-07-13-007, on 491 Frederick Street in Orangeburg, by Mr. Charles Brown Senior. He wants to change it from residential general to commercial general. This audit, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Planning Commission met on January 9th, 2019, to discuss the request from Mr. Charles Brown Senior to have his property at 491 Frederick Street, Council District 5, rezoned to residential general, from residential general to commercial general. His property is made up of three lots that are being combined and are currently vacant. The lots are recently cleared of vegetated debris and combined from two streets, Chestnut and Frederick Street. The lots fall within the flood play categories by the 0.2% angle of flood zone. There are several other commercial uses within 500 feet of the shop, a barber shop, or ABC store, and pharmacies. The property is contiguous to the east of the proposed zoning request, a zone CG. The proposed site will be less than 700 feet from the main entrance of South Carolina State University as well, and village housing. The owner desires to establish a restaurant. The property owner who owns the property, who owns property in the general vicinity of what's her...
her concerns on how the zoning will affect the residential community, would it affect property taxes, and required the county's vision for future growth. Although she does not live there, she was concerned about the commercial nature of the proposal. There were no other comments in favor or opposition of the request. Therefore, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request and the letter was received on 1/18/19, the following adjacent property owner located at 489 Frederick Street, expressing in opposition of the zoning.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Administrator. Council, you all have any comments?
I have a question. Were you in opposition of this?
I did not express opposition or compliance. I, I have some concerns.
Could I get a motion and a second for passes in second reading?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Mr. Lawrence Frazier for second reading. All in favor, please signify by aye. Any opposed, ayes aye, and motions care. Item five is, this is the first reading on this ordinance and this is an ordinance establishing a new structure for water and sewer service charges, water and sewer tap fees, deposits in all other fees and surcharges for commercial and industrial customers of the Orangeburg, of the county of Orangeburg. Mr. Young, this is you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a part of the water fees that we have to buy by, that we have to charge and is determined based upon the fact that we have USD and other loans backing our systems. So therefore, from time to time, the conditions of the, of the, of the different loans and the other conditions that we use and amend from other parts of the system also require us to change our fees in regards to how we are charged through other agencies as well, as such as Department of Public Utilities and other places that we receive main water fund. So this is an update of all our fees that is used for our water services and our rates and our unauthorized user fees and miscellaneous account fees.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Young?
I know what issues of water service and what issues of fire hydrants, what misuse of fire service, what classified misuse, somebody getting fire truck driving over it?
Our yield to John McGlaughlin.
It's mainly meant for the hydrants.
Huh?
Mainly meant for hydrants.
But it's got any of the fire service and fire hydrant?
Yes. Fire hydrants normally, and then if there's a fire activity going on, it's also regulated through fire service.
But all fire department has authorized use of fire hydrants?
That's correct.
All hydrants?
That's correct. Department of Health and Environment Control makes us keep up with the volume, so that's what I've asked the fire service to do, is we gotta keep track of the volume.
How much water do you?
That's correct.
I'll put it in the account.
Okay, any other questions? Any none, could I get a motion and second, first reading on this ordinance? So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Mr. Livingston and second by Mr. Owens that we have first reading on item ordinance number five. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, ayes aye, and motions care. Official action is approval of the Orangeburg County Budget Council for fiscal year 2020. It's pretty well self-explanatory, so I just need a motion and a second that we approve this calendar.
Mr. Chairman, I want to reapprove the calendar for everybody that.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Owens, second by Ms. Cooper Smith, that we approve the 2020 budget calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, ayes aye, and motions care. Appointment of boards, commission, and committee. I'd like to, appointment to lower the balance council of government board, could I get someone to make that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mayor Michael C. Butler to that position.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and second by Mr. Lawrence Frazier that we appoint Mayor Michael C. Butler to lower the balance council of government board. All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed to that, ayes aye, and motions care. Probably works, an update from Pub Works Committee, I'll yield to the chairperson, Mr. John.
Mr. Chairman, council, we had three items when I was talking today. And the first item was pre-riding a discontented maintenance along Nell's Road. We actually left it in committed, no action taken, for study. Second one would propose a decision to solid waste ordinance. We propose to, a recommendation to council is to amend the solid waste ordinance, propose penalty for mixed load of household garbage and construction, they call it C and D, and the fine for that is on $500. That's a recommendation from Pub Works Committee.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation from Pub Works Committee, this is not either just recommendation is that we pass someone for information, and then when we get the updates or we can completion of it, then it will come back before council for approval. Thank you so very much.
We don't vote on the fee, or the fine fee mixing tonight, we get an ordinance back and then, how's that work?
All right, I thought we wait till we get it, Madam Attorney, we wait till we get the ordinance right before we vote on that, okay, because that needs to be voted on tonight.
You actually don't have it on, this is just a committee report, so you can't, you can't vote like on the ordinance itself, only on the recommendation to proceed forward within all ordinance.
We need to, do we need to have a vote on the recommendation?
Sure.
Do we or do we?
Well, you don't have to, that would give me a direction.
Okay, all right, well.
Chairman, I move that we pass the recommendations of $500 fine for mixed, mixed container of household garbage and C and D, C and D fill in the same container, and I move that we take this and move forward the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Moved by Mr. Whimley, the second by Mr. Owens, that we follow through with the recommendation of the $500 fee for mixed load at the landfill. All in favor of it, please say aye. Any opposed to it, ayes aye.
I think it'd be good for the public, because nobody's being punished and give an explanation as the dinner just filed, managed a landfill.
The purpose of this proposal, that's what happened is we were getting, or not getting, but having a lot of complaints about people dumping household trash, concrete slabs, et cetera. It was having, we were getting a lot of damage to our equipment. And to recoup our costs, this to use is going to be, has to be put in place, but that's primary what this is putting in place for. Actually, we're not supposed to, in other words, we're not supposed to have mixed loads in one, in one container. It should have been separated. So that's what we're trying to work the public toward.
Mr. Chairman, you might want to also add, that was for commercial haulers to the main landfill, not a convenience site.
You heard that, what the administrator said, that was basically for commercial haulers, people who are all in the 40 and 20 and 60 yard line, not for regular people who go to a convenience site, so it doesn't have nothing to do with most people, it's just for commercial people, contractors and stuff.
We have a third item, Pub Works, and all this establishing a system recruitment cost occurring for repair damage to our county maintaining roads and damage and resort is extraordinary to use. What happened is, I'm not going to say specifically, just laws, but anybody who having heavy equipment, et cetera, et cetera, on our county roads, occurring a lot of damage, a lot of inconvenience to our citizens on their normal routine to get back and forth to their residence. And we are proposing an ordinance, a script and an ordinance on to that effect as well. That's just for information.
Thank you so much. Any other comment from anyone? All right, thank you, Mr. Robinell. The next item is a vote for executive session, and this is economic development update under code 30-4-70, and it's concerning Project Glass. Could I get a motion and second to go into executive session for this?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Owens and second by Mr. Lawrence Frazier that we go into executive session for the information of economic development update. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, ayes aye, and motions care. Any comments from any council before I call for a vote again?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is about the third and fourth call I have on one of my constituents, about a nightclub right off of Chestnut.
Yes, sir.
Just we get to the fast food place, and he stated that it has aggravated him for last couple of years, operating at two and three o'clock in the morning. And I'm asking that the administrator, please check on that, because he's one of my constituents, and I want my constituents to be bothered with life, though.
Move, Chair. You have a man, or you was gonna let him check?
He beaten by someone.
That's the name of the club?
My name is a young man, been called.
What's the name of the club?
I don't know. I've been by there a year and a half, but it's right off of Chestnut, right before we get to hit our business right up there.
Okay. We're looking to.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions from any, unaccompanied, any council? No, if not, Mr. Young, you want to comment on that last thing?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just like to make the public aware, and thanks to the forward thinking of council and all you have done throughout the couple of years and what we've tried to accomplish. Last Thursday, I witnessed firsthand something that was epic to the scene of a movie with a fuel tanker crash on I-95. And at that particular time, the fireball and the, and the smoke and everything made you think you were at a movie production, something that horrific. But I was sitting there watching countless numbers of times how individuals from the Santee Fire Department, with Ed Barnett was the home scene, and I think he was incident commander, and Orangeburg County Volunteer Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, police from Santee EMS, and as well as Clariden County, and Dorchester, I'm sorry, Dorchester County assisted on that. These gentlemen did not turn away, they ran straight to that fire, something that you would thought you were seeing something epic as, as you would see in a movie. And they had not only the fortitude to go and not turn around, well, the equipment and the wherewithal to be able to put that fire out. And I think the citizens of Orangeburg County need to realize, that doesn't happen by accident. That happens because we have men and women who care about this community, who volunteer, who work, who are highly trained, have the proper equipment and the wherewithal to do it because of what you incorporate to us to put on the streets. And citizens need to understand that that incident could have been much larger had we not had the foam and what we need to work with to put fires and things of that nature out. That just, we just don't have those containers sitting around by happenstance, have proper planning to deal with something of that magnitude. If that would have happened in many other communities, it would have been way more catastrophic than it actually was because that fire could have got up and down I-95. It was shut down commerce for long periods of time, but it was, it was handled. And the bridge did suffer some damage, but the amount of damage could have been way more significant had we not had what we needed to take care of the incident. And I think that that goes to what we put on the ground as a county, and the citizens need to understand that it's their fellow citizens that they go to church with, that they eat lunch with, that they live with, are putting their lives on the line, running to something that the rest of us are running from. So I just thought that needed to be said and brought to the attention of the public as well as caps.
And our taxman are buying the equipment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say something, please. We have a young man in the audience who's one of our volunteer fire group persons, and I'd like to have him to comment on that. And I'm quite sure he was at that scene.
I was there at the scene and he covered it very well. We had the right equipment, we used a lot of foam, but we had the foam available, we controlled it, it never got down to I-95, we contained it on the bridge and we put it out. It was an excellent job by all the county volunteer fire departments plus Santee. It was an exceptionally good job that was done. That's what we're here for.
Tell us who you are.
Thank you.
And tell us who you are.
My name is Carl Thompson, I'm with Providence Volunteer Fire Department in Providence. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Mr. Robinell?
Thank Mr. Thompson for that, those great remarks. Him and I, we are a lot of scenes we be at together. And being by work realm, it doesn't be a pleasant scene all the time. But nevertheless, I was at the scene as well at the 301 and I was at I-95 accident. And we as citizens, I'm not going to say because it may be unethical, we are saying because of investigation, what people were driving today, they make some terrible choice how to drive. And I felt that if a person would have did the right thing, that young man who was driving that tanker would have been living today. With my service, I helped clean up the mess and towed the car in and all of this, but just having to be there. And the 301 bridge, it's a new bridge, it's gone, it's going to be closed for an undetermined amount of time. The roadway, the highway, had so much damage to it, when I came up on the scene, I thought somebody took and threw rocks on the roadway, but that was actually a high, the asphalt got until it softened up there and made the rocks to be brittle. And it was, it's like, Ms. Brennan said, it's just like something you see in a movie. And you'd never think it would just happen in your neighborhood. But you just gotta be more careful, be more diligent with what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Robinell, anyone else? If not, we thank you all for coming out and attending our meeting. Could I get a motion and a second for agenda?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Owens for agenda. Thank you again.